Okay, welcome to everyone who's joined us here in the council chambers this evening, as well as those that have joined us at home. This is a meeting of the Pecosin City Council from Monday, January 26. I've put Councilman Vernal on a very short leash this evening to do a prayer for us, because many of us were just cruising in on two wheels as we approached the city this evening. So if you'll lead us in the prayer and pledge allegiance, I would appreciate it.
Heavenly Father, we ask your blessing and your guidance as we gather here this evening. Keep us ever mindful of the responsibility and the trust that's been placed in us by our fellow citizens. Give us a share of your wisdom so that we may always act in the best interest of our community. We ask your protection for all who serve us and who protect us here at home and abroad, especially those who may be in harm's way. And we ask your special love and care for the families who are separated because of that service. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you very much. Before we hit the audience for visitors, there was something I brought up in work session, and I'm gonna basically start that right now with one announcement, if council will bear with me. During the council work session this evening, we talked about tree replacement on With Creek Road. And I want to make sure that people out in the community here hear first, instead of on, as we sometimes get on social media, the bad information before the real information. So I will tell you that Pecosin's gonna do some paving this year on With Creek Road. And as part of that, one of the major issues that we have in our city is with damage to the infrastructure that supports that paving, i.e. the curb and gutter, the drainage outlets being pushed by those trees. We have talked now for several months about this tree replacement plan, and it is a tree replacement plan. We are going to take down the Bradford pears that everybody's used to seeing on With Creek Road. They have a 20-year lifespan essentially. We are at 30. Most people have seen them. They're in disrepair, and they need to have a better look and a fresher look. So we are going to accomplish that with the help of the Public Works Group and some vendors. And they will be replaced in the fall with a new set of trees. So it'll be a year of change on the main corridor, but it'll be a great change at the end. And so I just want everybody to know, and there will be opportunities if you would like to sponsor a tree, if you want to have one with a plaque on it to a loved one, in memory of, or in celebration of, you'll be able to do that, or any clubs that would like to participate. But I want to get that information out, instead of hearing about it on the backside. This is probably just that first step. So that was discussed in the work session just prior. If you want all the details, you'll be able to review the tape. But thank you for that, and thank you for your indulgence counsel. I'd like to move next to the audience for visitors. Audience for visitors has a time to talk to us about any subject unless we specifically have a public hearing for it, or we have some consideration. I know we have a couple of requests here, and we have public hearings for those, so you don't need to speak about those at this time. But anything else that the public would like to share with us? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the audience for visitors and ask council for approval of the minutes.
Mayor, I move that we approve the minutes of the regular session of January 10, 2015.
Second. A motion made in second, that we approve those minutes. And thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, for running that. And I'm glad that, I'm hoping that none of y'all got what I had at last council meeting. So I'm glad to be back, though. So Judy, please.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
The date's okay. Okay. Just want to make sure the date, I think the date mentioned might have been off, but we're good.
We'll get it checked. You said the 10th. You said the 10th, but it's the 12th.
All right. Next item on the agenda is a set of public hearings. And the first public hearing is the official kickoff of our budget season, and that is for the city. And that public hearing is, I will open it now, and what we're looking for here is any comment from the public on things that council should consider during its budget deliberations. If there's items that we are doing well, that you believe us, that need to be included in the budget, now's a good time to make any sort of suggestion for that. And we, again, we see this as really the official kickoff of the budget. We have no budget in front of us. This is a discussion of if there's something that we're not doing or should be doing better. So I'll open that public hearing now and ask if there's anybody here that would like to speak on that subject. Okay, staff is pretty quiet, and so they don't want to speak. Now, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing then, and let you know that we will be going through the budget in the coming months. I don't know if y'all have a budget schedule yet, or what that looks like, but you want to briefly review?
Schedule? I'll call it off the top of my head. I think it's pretty much as normal. Teresa, why don't you come up and summarize the key dates?
And it doesn't have to be to the day.
Well, there's a few dates that are already set in stone.
Very good.
April 13 is when the city manager will present his proposed budget. Prior to that, there may be a work session on the budget. And April 27 is the public hearing on the proposed budget, with adoption the first meeting in May.
Very good.
Okay, so now everybody understands what the timeline is, and we'll be working in 2015. Thank you very much. Sorry to put you on the spot like that. But you know, I'm just going with it tonight. The next public hearing is a request of Bruce Price and Brian Bloxham to establish a full-service restaurant at 1165 Pecosin Avenue. And on this one, I'm sure that we'll start with a presentation.
By Kevin.
By Kevin. And Kevin, we'd be pleased to hear from you at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and honorable members of council, and Mr. Wheeler. We have received a conditional use permit application for the re-establishment of a restaurant use at the old Crab Cake House property. And pardon me. I'm gonna bring up the slideshow. My apologies. The property was recently purchased, and it had been on the market for quite some time, and it was recently purchased by Mr. Brian Bloxham and Mr. Jamie Price. They're requesting the re-establishment of a restaurant use at 1165 Pecosin Avenue, which is right at the intersection with North Lawson and South Lawson and Pecosin Avenue, approximately a couple hundred feet from Sheffield's Grocery to the east there. Here's an aerial map of it. You can see it's at that intersection, Sheffield's just to the west there. It's in a, it's Zone B1, and it's surrounded by single-family residential uses, aside from Sheffield's and South Lawson Park, which is approximately 1,000 feet to the south there. But you can see, it's a little patch of B1, which is office professional use, and a C of Pink, which is R2 Single Family Residential, which is our densest single-family residential district, but still single-family nonetheless. This timeline here is a little skewed, because certain other things came to our attention at the planning commission meeting. But initially, in the way the staff report was structured, the applicants were going to use a food truck on-site to cook barbecue and utilize certain portions of the building for its food storage, prep, restroom facilities. Seating would be utilized as needed. And as the demand warranted, the applicants planned to re-establish the full-service restaurant. However, it came to our understanding Thursday at the planning commission meeting that they actually, the only thing they want to do on a food truck on-site is cook the barbecue, because they have a trailer with the barbecue pit, and that is what they wish to do. Everything else will take place within the building. A little history on the property. The site last operated as a restaurant use in November of 2009, which is an infamous time. That's when Norida or the Veterans Day storm rolled through the city of Pecosin. Prior to that time, a restaurant use was grandfathered on the property. Since the use has been discontinued for a period exceeding two years, the grandfather's status has expired, thus necessitating the need for a conditional use permit. Article 1-8 of our ordinance allows for a property owner to petition city council to use a property that, within its zoning district, is not specified as a permitted use, as in the case in this, the B1 district. They are not allowed to have a restaurant operation, thus they are petitioning you all for permission to utilize that. The planning commission considered this item last week at their regular meeting and recommended it to you all for approval by a vote of five to zero. And those are with staff conditions, which I'll get into after we go through a few pictures here. But you can see some work has already been done, ours in the process of being done on the building. The building's quite large. It's about 2,300 square feet. The property itself is only .33 acres. So they're pretty maxed out, as far as setbacks. This is a larger open area in the back. You can see Pecosin Avenue and some of the houses across Pecosin Avenue from the property. This is facing North Lawson in that same angle. It's the front from Pecosin Avenue. Here's the front of the building again. And this is the larger, facing the actual intersection. You can see some houses on Pecosin Avenue as well as North Lawson. And this is facing South Lawson and Pecosin Avenue. So really, with these pictures, I tried to illustrate the residential character of the neighborhood. But if you move forward with recommending approval for this application, staff has developed the following conditions. One, all trash receptacles shall be screened from adjacent properties and right-of-ways. Two, the use must comply with all local, state, federal regulations. If at any time this use is operating in violation of any of the regulations set forth by the aforementioned agencies, city council may revoke this permit. It's a standard permit we've used in many of our use permits. Number three, the use permit shall be used solely for the establishment of a restaurant use and shall not be interpreted for use of a business that cannot be classified as such. Any other use not specifically permitted within the property zoning district shall require a separate use permit. The operation of the use shall be restricted to the hours of 6:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. No activity supporting this use shall be conducted outside this window. On-site lighting shall be shielded in a manner that prevents light trespass to adjacent properties, but still allows for sufficient lighting on-site during evening hours. If at any time the specified permitted use on the property is discontinued for a period of two years or more, the permit shall become null and void. And lastly, city council reserves the right to review and amend the conditions of this permit as they see fit. This is kind of an unprecedented condition that we've come up with. However, during the process, we spoke with a few adjacent property owners, and we felt that a condition of this nature was important, primarily because we may be able to control the use on the property, a restaurant. However, under that restaurant category, there are several subcategories of restaurants, some more desirable than others. So if this use were to morph into something bigger, more impactful, we think this is important to have something where you can revisit it as you all see fit. So that's why we developed that condition. So that is all. I can take any questions you may have, or take some comments. Yes, sir.
What about the truck? How long would the truck be there?
The truck, my understanding is that it is, it's a barbecue pit. It cooks barbecue. So my understanding from last Thursday is that the pit will be on-site and cooked outside, such as many barbecue restaurants do, not all, but some do. So it would be in there in perpetuity.
In the back. How big is it, the truck?
It is 20 feet. It's 20 feet, and it would be parked in this area here, in the rear, but in front of that pole. Yeah, in the back.
In the back of the restaurant?
Yes, at the back of the restaurant. Would not be parked in the front, but in the rear, close to where the dumpster would be.
That gonna be shielded from the public view at all, or not?
There are no conditions limiting the view of that now, no, sir.
It's the truck that you sell out of now, right? It's the truck that you're using now to set?
Let's, let's, if you don't, I'm sorry, sir. If you don't mind, we'll get the public hearing that I was planning on having. I know you want to talk about what your goals and visions are, but I just want to keep this kind of orderly. All right, so is any other questions of staff?
It's my understanding that the food would be actually cooked in the trailer, but then it would be served from inside the building to people, not people coming up to a window in the trailer. So it's just a convenience to cook it outside so that it can then be taken inside to be served?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And that, is that, that's all covered in the guidelines that you've given for the conditional use permit?
The conditions, yes. We did develop those conditions without having that general understanding per our meeting last Thursday with the planning commission meeting. But staff is comfortable with all of those conditions that we presented covering the operation of that use, yes.
Mayor, Kevin. Help me understand what you just said. The mayor asked whether or not the conditions were such that the food would be cooked outside and served inside.
Yes.
And you said yes, but then you went on to say that the conditions you wrote previous to the Thursday session with the planning commission didn't reflect that understanding. So let me try one more time. Does the set of written conditions require that the food, whether it's cooked in the trailer or somewhere else, that all food is actually served inside the building?
No, the conditions right now do not stipulate that all food.
Should the council wish to?
We can modify.
They can modify and do that.
And that's why I asked that question, you know, reading the comments of some of the things that we've got up here, as well, Bud's suggestion, or comment, it's not a suggestion, but his comment on shielding of the truck, that could be added to the conditions as well. Is that right?
Absolutely.
Because when I look at your picture there, it looks like somebody's front yard, where you're talking about.
It's looking right up there.
This here, actually, the.
I mean, they're facing a different angle, but it would be.
Yeah. This picture, those houses are across North Lawson, to the north there. The property behind it is actually city-owned property.
Right.
That there's, it's undeveloped, it's mostly marsh. There's a stream in between that property, a house, and then onto Sheffield's.
I wouldn't be concerned about the shield into the marsh, but I would be concerned about the shield into the front of the houses.
Okay. So I just want to, again, these are not conditions, these are, I guess, a couple things that council can think about, and not say anything else. All right, any other questions, or any other concerns for staff on the presentation? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that presentation. By the way, I'm sorry, I did have one. This obviously passed planning commission, and was there any, what was the vote on that?
What was the vote? The vote was five to zero at the planning commission, recommending approval with the conditions as you see them this evening.
Okay, that's always important to us, to make sure that. Okay. With that said, this is a public hearing, and what we would like to do is open that public hearing and ask, really, I always like to have the folks that are bringing us the conditional use permit, I always like to hear y'all talk before any other member of the public talks. I don't see too many here to dissuade you this evening. But what I would say is, we'd like to hear your vision. And what, you know, what's, what can't we pick up from the kind of tight, you know, thing that we've seen there? What's your vision for the business? What do you want to do? And how do you see this play it out, so that we understand the nature of what you're gonna Welcome, gentlemen. And for the record, if y'all could just state your name and your current address, so she can get a.
Jamie Price, 38 Pascher Road.
Brian Bloxham, 130 Church Street.
Joe Boone, and I'm at 58 Priorsley in Williamsburg.
Thank you very much. I guess.
Good evening.
You don't need to lean into the microphone.
Right, it'll pick you up.
It'll get you.
It'll pick you up.
Blowing y'all out of here.
No, sir, you're absolutely fine. Like I said, we're all relaxed, please relax. What are your vision?
All right, good evening. Me and Mr. Bloxham are looking to re-establish the use permit at the property for what it was used for, for many years, a restaurant, as we all know it as the Crab Cake House back in the day. We're looking to do a barbecue restaurant, just like Mr. Kevin said over there, the trailer. It's deceiving on the look how big the area is in the back. It's a lot bigger than what the picture displays. The trailer would be back there, that's where you would cook some, not like french fry, it would be like the barbecue cook pit.
So basically, what I'm taking from that is, there will be, there will be a kitchen inside as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's important enough.
All right, thanks.
Go ahead.
Keep going.
Oh, all right. We want to make it a, probably a 60, 70-person restaurant, hopefully. Family restaurant, that's what we're looking for, re-establish. I mean, a lot of people have shown a lot of support wanting the restaurant to stay, they didn't want it tore down. You know, I guess the history, I think a lot of people would like to see a restaurant back there, and we'd like to see a restaurant back there. That's our goal.
All right. Do you like saying anything?
There was a lady on North Lawson Road. Did you get the petition?
We've got a petition and a letter, but, and I think most of us have had the time to read it.
She, yeah, we have a picture of the trailer too, right here. She went down on her own time and signed a petition for everybody on North Lawson Road, and not one person did not like the restaurant coming back into play, so.
All right. Anything else you'd like to share with us?
No, sir, is there any questions we can address?
Well, let me, let me ask if there's any other members of the public that would like to speak about this subject first. Okay, seeing none, then, yes, if you'll step back up to the podium, I wouldn't mind. I'll allow council to ask you anything that they, that they want to hear. Okay?
I'm curious if you know how, what the seating capacity was when it was the Crab Cake House?
Around 80.
Okay, so about the same.
And one of the, I think that, just from my perspective, one of the fears of the neighborhood is, and this is really only one person, what is your vision for serving of alcohol?
We, we would like to eventually apply for the ABC license.
Okay.
And have a family restaurant, on that nature.
Very similar. Just like. Crab Cake House did have beer and wine. That's your vision?
Yes, sir.
Is that right?
You're not putting up a bar, is our question.
There's only, there's only one implication. There's only one implication.
And I think that's what we all think, when we, when we read comments, you know, sometimes it can get dissuaded that way. That's why we want to hear from you, what your vision is, and that's important to us.
I have one question, Gene.
Yes, sir.
We talked just a few minutes ago about whether or not there would be a requirement that all food be served in the restaurant and not from the trailer. Would you have a problem with that being added to the restrictions?
That's, that's fine.
No, sir.
As long as there could be a to-go window. There was to-go at the Crab Cake House, so.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
That would be in the restaurant, not from the truck.
Correct. Okay.
That wouldn't matter.
So you're, you're good with that, if council has that? And anything else?
Six days a week, guys, or seven days a week?
I'm sorry.
Six days a week or seven days a week? What's the schedule?
You know, we're thinking maybe five.
Five.
Yeah, I'm just, we'll get started with five, maybe five days a week, and then see how it goes. You know, mainly, we wanted to be a family restaurant, barbecue specialty. And we'd smoke all the stuff on the barbecue trailer, but all the sides, everything else will be, you know, made inside and served inside.
So I don't think the conditional use permit carries you down to five. I don't think it talks, does it talk about?
No, it's just hours of operation.
Just hours of operation. And I don't want to add that unless there's a specific reason that we would like to add that.
I do have one question about the smoke and the smoking. How, how long does smoke, how long do you smoke, the barbecue?
Again, it depends on what you're smoking, but usually, you know, a couple days a week, we do some smoking, five hours, four hours, five, depends on what I'm cooking. And it's no more than someone having a fireplace going. So it smells better, because you're using the skeet or hickory or pecan.
You're one of your people.
Something real good.
So I guess, I guess.
I'm probably within sniffing distance.
You see that within your hours of operation? In other words, I think that, and I'm going by memory here, but if I come by Pearson's pit barbecue, there are a lot of times they're smoking at four in the morning. You see yourselves doing this in your norm, within your normal hours of operation, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, pretty much. I mean, I may have to start at seven in the morning or something to cook most of, most of the day.
To be clear, Mr. Mayor, the conditions as presented said all activities supporting the use would happen during hours of operation.
Right.
So you can't pretty much start early, it's.
Six to 10.
Six to 10, yeah.
Okay, great. Which, which answers the question, doesn't it? You don't have to be there in the middle of the night. Okay.
Hope not. That happens.
You actually probably hope that you do. You hope you're that successful. Okay. All right, so any other questions? None, thank you, yes. I appreciate it. Appreciate you sharing with us. Okay, with that, and no other planned speakers here, I'll close the public hearing and ask for consideration by council.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution approving a conditional use permit to establish a full-service restaurant on property located at 1165 Pecosin Avenue, Pecosin Tax Map parcel number 21-01-00-0044, and add to the conditions a number eight that stipulates that the food will be served to the customers inside and not from the trailer.
Second. Any motion made in second? Second. All right, motion made in second, that we approve this resolution. Questions? I mean, basically, consider it, questions or comments of council at this time. Okay, seeing none, then Judy, please.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you very much. And good luck. Good luck. All right, the next public hearing this evening is an ordinance amending the code of ordinances by revising Chapter 66, Article 2 pertaining to solid waste collection charges.
Mr. Mayor, there are two changes here. The last, the second was made late and is not reflected in the cover memo, so I'll outline that one. As council will recall from work sessions that we've had last fall about the cycling program, one of the things that Tom and Budina shared was that our contractor was willing to do, to buy a truck and do some of the long, late pickup, so that people didn't have to bring it out to the closest private, or excuse me, public street. And there would be a cost for that, for anyone wishing to participate on a voluntary opt-in basis. As we looked at it and actually prepared to do the mailer that you had requested that we do, in that research, we determined that we needed to amend the solid waste ordinance to allow us to actually charge that extra fee. We had hoped that it could be a relationship directly between the homeowner and the company. They declined twice, they being, being the company. So we're asking your consent to amend it, so that persons, property owners that voluntarily choose to opt into this program, that their bill can then summarily be reflective of that. We would not be charging any kind of pass-through or administrative fee beyond the direct cost of the contractor. The second change is one that came to my attention recently, the need for it. You'll find that on the first page of the ordinance, actually under 66-42B1. And this pertains to solid waste fees. to solid waste fees charged to vacant structures and the procedure and the timeline associated with recognizing a property as vacant and then not charging them the solid waste fee. Councilman Green may also wish to speak to this, but he spoke to me about a situation that doesn't happen that often, but does happen in the city, where you have a U.S. Armed Services member, or in this case, two, both of whom were deployed out of the state, and that would essentially make the house vacant upon deployment. And what this amendment would do in instance like that is to allow the city manager to grant exceptions to the 90-day wait if the service members are being deployed outside of the Commonwealth, and that results in the house being vacant, to, upon request, to consider basically speeding up that 90 days to something that may be more appropriate, considering the fact that the U.S. service members really didn't have any choice but other than deploy as per their responsibility. So, Mr. Green, did I summarize that okay?
Yes, yes. This came to my attention, my daughter lives next door to this couple, and the wife is in the hospital service and the Air Force, the husband's in security forces, one will be in Afghanistan, one will be in Qatar, and they won't be anywhere near each other, but they're going to be gone for six months. And my daughter's going to take care of going in and running the water once, but they don't want to cut off any services, but they will not be using the trash service at all. And so, you know, I thought in support of our military, we certainly could waive that fee to them.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think there's a federal law about that, too.
I think we have to.
Yeah, I think we do.
I would want to do it anyway.
Well, true.
Right.
But I think the government helps us.
All right, that's the first thing they've been helping. Take a note of, would you put that in the minutes? Okay, so I guess really, the private lanes thing, the pass-through, is there a suggested cost of what that could be?
The current cost, I think, is $10, is what they projected, but because that may vary up or down.
Per period?
Per month.
Per month.
Per house, per month.
Per house, per month.
But that cost may vary over time, up or down, depending on how many people they have. So we thought, rather than put this specific number in here and then have to amend it each time, that we would simply say, because it's a voluntary program that they're free to opt out of, that we would pass the cost on without any administrative cost, and they can always opt out.
Correct, all right, so it's not a mandatory program, voluntary program, and if somebody wants to do that, we would be in their way if we didn't allow that. So I don't ever want to be in somebody's way of making their own decisions.
Does the recycling company have a minimum that they would require in order to make it worth their while doing, if they're going to buy a truck?
They haven't, they haven't indicated that there would be a minimum.
All right, so anything else to? Sorry. So we're having a public hearing this evening on those two changes, and the changes again are allowing folks to opt in or out of having private lane collection and the pass-through, the vacant structure, allowing the city to waive those costs, especially in terms of military, but I know we already do those in terms of idle property. So I'll open the public hearing now and ask if anybody in the audience would like to speak on those subjects. Sure.
Come forward. Tom, come on up before you start talking.
Yeah, I think there's maybe one more item that was supposed to be on that, and it was like the, we were going to give all the folks in the city, each person right now gets one free bulk pickup.
Oh, that's correct.
And everybody gets that, but what we wanted to do, we wanted to change it where each citizen can use either a landscaping or a bulk pickup for free, their first pickup. It's always been in the past, just the bulk pickup, but we wanted to offer that to the citizens. We don't really care which one they use for free, I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Tom. All right, so it's basically.
Whichever kind works best for their family.
I'll restate that for the purpose of the public hearing, but this is one that I'd asked about, and in particular, and so this would allow a citizen either one free pickup a year, it can be white goods, it can be landscape, it can be, is there really another?
They get one free pickup, and we'll let them have whatever they want. We call it a landscape pickup or a bulk pickup.
Can you mix it?
And if they put out a refrigerator, I mean, we'll take, we just want to give them that opportunity.
Okay.
And any other pickup after that, and it's, you know, it's through the fiscal year, you know, it would be a fee to that.
Then there's the fee for the second one.
Yes, sir.
How much is that fee?
Actually, the fee for the bulk pickup is $63, and the fee for landscaping is 60. So, but, yes, sir.
On this free pickup, it's either one or the other. You can't mix.
No, either or.
All right, thanks, thanks for clarifying that, keeping us straight. All right, so with that correction, I'd like to reopen the public hearing. I didn't think there was going to be anybody here to talk about those, but, so with that being said, I'll close the public hearing and ask for consideration by counsel.
Mayor, I move that we adopt an ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the City of Pecoson, Virginia by revising Chapter 66, Article 2 pertaining to solid waste management.
Second. Motion made in second, additional comments, counsel? Seeing none, Judy, please.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman. Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, now we'll move to the next section of the meeting, it's unfinished business, and in here we have an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance by revising Article 11, Village Commercial District pertaining to standalone residential development.
Mr. Mayor, as counsel will recall, the previous two meetings, counsel discussed potential changes to the Village Commercial District, which would essentially allow the separation, the physical separation of the residential components and the non-residential components, which are currently now in the Village Commercial, required to actually be part of the same structure. And the issue of continuing discussion for counsel beyond whether or not you should do it at all was, should there be additional safeguards to make sure that you don't get a portion of the project, one piece or the other, presumably the residential piece, and not do something to ensure, or help make sure, that the rest of the project builds out? And we discussed this extensively, and I believe you will find the result of that discussion in direction by counsel in the section 11-32I, BI, which says, "When a separation of uses is proposed in accordance with Section 11-3.2B, developer must construct all required infrastructure to include ingress and egress stormwater features and all necessary utilities prior to the issuance of any certificate of occupancy for buildings on the site." Essentially, what that means is the street network's got to be in, the stormwater network's got to be in, really, the whole, the whole thing, not the building itself, but the thought, and I don't mean to presuppose, but what the council members were talking about as a group last meeting was, this is, this gives the developer an even greater incentive to go ahead and proceed with the full development, because they've had to sink significant money in the infrastructure costs that are not directly and solely only related to the residential, but in fact, the entirety of the project. Kevin, did I summarize that pretty well? Did I miss anything? If I did, please come up. Feel free to add to or correct anything I said.
Well, perfectly great summary. Mr. Wheeler did a fantastic job. Just want to elaborate, that exact code section, which would require infrastructure to be built out before any certificate of occupancy is granted, is in two separate sections in the Village Commercial. One, which is in the by right use, and then one in the, where a conditional use permit would be required for the ratio if it were to exceed 50%, the residential, I'm sorry, the residential portion, if it exceeds 50%, it requires a conditional use permit, and that's regulated by a separate subsection within Article 11. All right?
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, and this is first reading, if I understand?
Yes, sir.
All right, so is there a motion by counsel?
Mayor, I move that we adopt an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance by revising Article 11, Village Commercial District.
Second. A motion made in second, that we adopt this ordinance. Is there questions or comments by counsel?
Yes. Buddy and I both had some comments on this, and I think we were alike in our comments, but at any rate, the way I read it now, it does allow that any contractor whose heart's in the right place to do the mixed zoning, mixed instruction in there, that this would be a more efficient way for them to do it in any case, okay?
Absolutely.
And if there was anyone whose heart wasn't in the right place who intended just to build residential and not really have any intent to do the business, this would prohibit that activity. But I want to make certain that we don't create a hardship in that, Kevin, does this require that they provide finished roads before any certificate of occupancy? Because as Buddy described earlier, when they first start these contracts, they might not want to put in a finished road because construction trucks will be running on those roads and tearing them up, and they may want to wait till the near completion of the project to do the actual finished road, which ought to be bonded, by the way, you know? But this doesn't require them to put in a finished road before you get a certificate of occupancy, does it?
The way it's worded now, we have some leeway at the administrative level to make sure that they provide the system without necessarily the finished grade.
Right, but there would be a bonding for the finished project.
Yes, they would still have to bond projects.
Well, that's fine.
That takes care of your questions?
Takes care of my questions.
All right, any other questions? All right, seeing none, Judy?
Oh, I have a comment.
I'm glad.
Not a question, sorry. I just would like to voice my objection again, I think we're making a mistake by doing this because the purpose of this zone was to help, partially to alleviate the tax burden from the backs of the citizens by ensuring that there are businesses built, and I believe that we are promoting building residence, residential, if we allow this, it's, we're promoting building the residence, and I don't think it would prohibit a builder from walking away and still making money, so I just wanted to voice that objection.
Anybody else want to make a comment? Okay, seeing none, Judy, please.
Councilwoman Crawford?
No.
Councilman Ayer?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman? Councilman Vernal?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to one.
Okay, thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is new business, and the first item here is a request to lease oyster grounds located in Back River Off Cove Road.
Mr. Mayor, recently the city received a request for a sublease of the oyster grounds that the city holds in its name in the immediate proximity of the Mesa Point on the side facing NASA. What Mr. Martin has asked us to consider is a lease, which is in this case, a four-year lease, and the reason for that being, according to him, it takes at least three years for the oyster growing and harvesting operation to go all the way from beginning to yield. What he's offering the city in this relatively short-term lease is basically to fulfill all the obligations that the city has under the lease during the period, and also to, because we lease this ourselves, so it's a sublease, and also that with reasonable notice, he would move his activities out of the way, should we have a workboat race or something else like that. The advantage for Mr. Martin is obvious, there'll be an oyster lease in close proximity to his new business, which he is currently working to get up and running, there on the property that he recently purchased from the city. The advantage for the city is that the obligations that we have as leaseholder from the state will be taken care of by him during that period. I recall when we went into the last renewal period of this, which was renewed in 2012, we had to move pretty hastily to demonstrate enough activity to qualify to re-lease this. This would take care of that for us, so they would be actively, it would be actively used in accordance with our responsibilities in the state lease.
So the obligations are that we have to actually work it to some extent?
That's correct, sir. Yes, sir. Ms. Moore was kind enough to draft the lease, and we present a few considerations.
But we're not doing anything with it, except pulling the races over.
That is, that is correct.
Is he going to put cages, or what's his plan, do we know that?
Cage.
Is there a motion by counsel? Do we consider this?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution approving the lease of oyster grounds located in Back River Off Cove Road.
Second. A motion made in second, that we approve this lease, and questions or comments by counsel?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
One question, if he's going to be growing the oysters in cages, would those cages be at a depth that would prohibit the public from running boats up to the shoreline there?
Up to the shoreline?
Yeah, I mean, we have a little beachy-like area there, and we have boat races, boats come up to the shore, some of the, they lock some of those boats here, and they come up right around to the shore, would they still be able to do that?
During the workboat races, the answer would be yes. He agreed to move all of his cages and any other equipment he may have during any special event. Beyond that, I can't speak with certainty, I would think that.
I mean, as far as kayaking activities up to the beach and around the shorelines and those kinds of things?
Those cages are generally staked off.
Yeah, they're marked, and they have to be in at least three feet of water at low tide, so it's pretty restrictive.
Not exposed.
All right, well, if they're in three feet of water at low tide, that shouldn't be any issue of bringing a boat up to the shore there, then.
Until you get to this time of year where you have those extreme tides.
Yesterday.
You know, I don't think there's enough water to have one anywhere.
I'm good with it.
Certain times of the year, but I think that for most times, there would be adequate water there.
In that area, just to the very left side, looking at it, where the hill and the viewing stand, I know Parks and Recs are looking at possibility of establishing little beach and kayak launch in that area, and that may be a few years down the road, but it would be ideal for that and get the kayaks away from the public land.
The lease can be canceled on 90 days' notice.
Oh, okay. Now, what we're getting from this is the fact that we don't have to work it.
That is correct.
Okay, no money exchanged.
And that it will be worked.
And it will be worked.
The lease calls for $10 payment, and Mr. Martin's assumption of all of our responsibilities under the lease, during the period of lease.
Any other questions or comments?
I have one comment, I do know that some people have been out there getting their own oysters that are there now. I don't know that enough people do that, that it would pose a major problem for anybody, but I don't know how many people go there now anyway.
They don't have any right to get any oysters off of the city's leased ground. If they're getting oysters off of their own ground or somebody else's, or they're trespassing on city property, one or the other.
All of that area is leased to somebody.
Okay.
So anybody.
I might have seen them on the property.
Anybody getting oysters that doesn't have a lease is violating the law.
Okay.
Can't get any more oysters.
All righty.
Put it back, Tracy.
I don't like walking in that mud.
I don't like walking in that mud either.
Yeah, okay, all right, if, any other questions or comments? If not, Judy, please.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilman Vernal?
Aye.
Councilman Ayer?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman? Mayor Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Next item under new business is an ordinance adopting the City of Pecoson Personnel Policy Manual.
Mr. Mayor, members of counsel, as you will recall, we have been as staff working on this for more than two years. The entirety of our personnel manual had been many years without revision, and as we don't have a HR department, there was no obvious group or person to give it to, so we assembled a staff team, which was primarily department heads, but not exclusively, and we began this process by dividing it into thirds, and when we would get done with each third, we would then present all the changes to the department heads and have a full full discussion, making final changes, and then bring it to you. And the three major pieces have all been previously adopted by you. And the fourth piece, which is the final blending piece, was simply to take those three pieces and renumber, re-codefy, do a full read one more time to make sure that there were no areas of disconnect and similar terminology. And we completed that process recently with the department heads. To include the constitutional officers, we made a handful of scriptish changes and term changes to be consistent. There is only one policy change in the entire revision from phases one, two, and three respectively to four, and that was something that we talked about as a department head group, and there was unanimous support for that. And what that is, you'll find that in the overtime policy, federal law has a special set of overtime calculation SOPs for firefighters. And what we decided in recommending this to you is that not only should people that perform firefighting, but all of our uniformed services, uniformed service members. So by that, we mean fire and rescue, police, public works, and utilities, the people that wear uniforms for a living for us that are eligible for overtime, that we're recommending that we calculate them all the same way. There's a preferential treatment in the law as it relates to firefighters, federal law, and we would ask you to consider doing the same for all of our uniformed service folks. It shouldn't have a significant impact financially. Essentially, what it means is, the way overtime is calculated and when you have to pay time and a half is for firefighters, if you're, let's say, they don't, but let's say they, all these employees work the 40-hour schedule. The, for most employees, you actually have to work 40 hours before you're eligible for time and a half, actually physically have to be there doing the job. Except for firefighters, because of the federal legislation, their vacation days, they could be on vacation for five days, be called in to work a sixth day, can get time and a half for that day. Most of the call-outs that we do are for very specific needs, problems, emergencies, special things like the convenience side and other things. So we thought, as a management group, that we ought to extend that same SOP voluntarily to the other folks that wear a uniform for the city that are eligible for overtime. So that is the only policy change in the fourth revision, and it was unanimously endorsed by the departments. Okay?
Thank you. All right. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt an ordinance adopting the Personnel Policy Manual for the city of Pecosin.
Second. A motion made and seconded that we adopt the ordinance. Any follow-up questions or comments?
I don't want to reinvent the wheel in here, but I looked through it. Is there smoking allowed in city vehicles? Is that in here? Did I miss that?
You do not allow smoking in city vehicles. It's in here somewhere. Find it. It's in the vehicle usage policy. I'm sorry.
I just missed it. It is in there, okay.
Can anybody give me the policy number?
I found it. Well, smoking to include e-cigarettes is not permitted in city vehicles. Just had to read a little deeper.
It's a huge manual that's been, by his taking us a couple of years.
It was riveting.
Yes.
It is a title.
And y'all did do an outstanding job on it.
You did. And I could tell there was a lot of give and take in the manual the way. There was some good writings about particular situations that had Pecosin written all over it. So I appreciate the fact, and I appreciate the unanimous endorsement of it. So especially the change in policy, because I want to make sure that everybody understands this city wouldn't really operate well if people didn't come in when we called them for emergencies. So we definitely want to reward them for that and pay them for that. All right, so we have the motion made and seconded. Any other questions or comments? If not, Judy?
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Vernal?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilman Ayer?
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford?
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Final item under new business is a resolution making appointments to the Library Advisory Board, Wetlands Board, and Architectural Review Board.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution to make appointments to the Library Advisory Board, Wetlands Board, and the Architectural Review Board with the following names inserted. And I'd like to preface this by the fact that the ones that are from the specific precincts were suggested by the members from that precinct.
Thank you.
For the Library Advisory Board, Amy H. Ziegler from the Central Precinct, her term will expire January 31, 2018. For the Wetlands Board, the member Paul Michael, his term will expire January 31, 2020. The alternate for the Eastern Precinct, Jack R. Patterson, his term will expire January 31, 2020. For the Architectural Review Board, Alan Parker, the builder, January 31, 2018, and Thomas Burcher as the attorney, January 31, 2018.
Is there a second? Second. One, I lose. They all went at the same time. Okay, so with motion made and seconded, all great choices, and appreciate council as they continue to work together within the various districts. So Judy, please.
Councilman Ayer?
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilman Vernal?
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Comments of the city manager?
Mr. Mayor, I only have one item this evening. Council members may recall from last week's Thursday report, I had highlighted for you that recently we had received a request from a citizen of Pecosin for the city to consider participating in the state's urban archery program, which is in opt-in hunting season for bow hunting, and its purpose is to assist in the management of population of deer. And urban deer can be not only beautiful at times, but they can also be a safety hazard in the streets and in close proximity to people. And I provided for you a copy of the information from the state's website and also the listing of the localities in Virginia, which include York County, that participate in this program and the information on it. And one of the things that is interesting is each of the participating localities, each has exercised some discretion to establish specific provisions within the context of the Code of Virginia that pertain to the special limits and conditions for this. And I included that with you as well. And Mr. Mayor, when you and I met on Thursday, I believe it was, to talk about this, you asked me a question, which I did not know the answer to, but the answer, council members, which is likely the first question that most of you would ask, is here at the dais, a response from Mr. LaFawn from the Virginia Department of Game and Fisheries. And my question was to discuss the differences between the urban archery program and traditional bow hunting season. And this is only three. Go ahead and read it. It's all right. And this is Mr. LaFawn's response to that question. Urban archery season is only public in localities that opt in. Statewide archery season, October and November, is open everywhere unless restricted or prohibited by local weapons ordinance. Urban archery season is for antlerless deer only, parentheses, does, whereas the statewide archery season is for all types of deer. Three, urban archery season is simply an extension of the archery season, in parentheses, one month before and three months after the statewide archery season. Note, all localities in Virginia that opt into the urban archery also allow bow hunting to continue through the October to January period, parentheses again, which include archery and firearm seasons during which archery equipment can be used, post parentheses. So there is a continuous seven-month season. So I think that's the answer to the question that I couldn't address. And my question tonight, obviously, I'm not asking you to take a position on this, but is this something that the council would like to consider? If so, and you would consider potentially participating this calendar year, we would need to give notice to the State Department of Game and Fisheries by April 1st, and any ordinances that you may wish to put in to establish those specific conditions would have to be done shortly thereafter, but not necessarily before. If you are interested in talking more about this, I'd be pleased to schedule that at a future work session and see if Mr. LaFawn from the state can join us to talk about it, or if you would prefer, we can hold this off to and consider it another time in the future.
On that particular, I'm the one, I asked about what's traditional bow season do we allow, and I think I had more questions than answers about understanding bow hunting. And, you know, if it's, if it's something that, in the paragraph three of what's the difference, almost makes me believe that we allow, within the city of Pecosin today, I believe our ordinance, correct me if I'm wrong, Wayne, would only allow the use of a shotgun in hunting. We don't allow the use of rifling.
We don't use that?
No rifles with, above a 22 is allowed within the use.
I think it's 22.
Yeah. But with that understanding, because of the closeness of our city, I just want to make sure that if you can hunt with a shotgun, or you can hunt with a bow, it really doesn't, I don't want to get in necessarily anybody's way. So my particular, from my particular perspective, I'd like to set up a work session to more clearly understand this nuance to hunting, and so that I can even make a decision whether we consider it as a city. But I'd kind of like to do that, the work session, whenever Randy can get that set up.
Maybe we could use the entire hunting with everything.
Well, I don't know if I... I just, yeah, I want to have a baseline comparison of what you can do today as compared to if you're, you know, if you're allowed to use a shotgun, the range of that is fairly short. The range of a bow and arrow is fairly short. So I don't see, I can't draw the distinction there. I know a rifle...
It is a 22. It said it should be unlawful to hunt with a rifle larger than 22 caliber rimfire.
Right.
It's unlawful to engage in hunting with firearms within the right of way of any primary or secondary highway. Unlawful to engage in hunting with a firearm within 100 yards of a primary or secondary highway, and violation of misdemeanor.
All right, thank you. And I believe we allow bow hunting now, but let's kind of get that together and understand it before we say we're proponents of urban archery. When he first meant it, when he first brought it to me and he said urban archery, I was like, what exactly does that mean?
So basically, this would extend the season.
That's what it sounds like, and it sounds like it would, it sounds like it would match the normal season. It sounds like you're more restricted by archery.
It goes beyond.
It would extend the season.
Before and three after.
And it would be more restrictive during the extended period.
Okay.
Right.
I would have a question to go back to the very initial thing that was said, what the intent of the urban archery season is to reduce the overpopulation of deer in so many words. And do we have that? That would be my first question. Do we have a real deer problem in the city? I'd see some, but I don't know that they're profuse.
I garden up.
Yeah.
I tell you, for the first time since I've lived here, I saw them walking down Brins Road.
I would tell you that we are, just like in many things, we are not unlike any other city. And development sometimes creates pockets where they're more protected and therefore they flourish.
They're coming from Newport News.
You know. They're coming across the bridge from Hampton.
I know they're walking down at the far end of Huntsville.
So let's learn some more, if y'all don't mind, and let's all sit down and talk about that. All right, is there anything else?
That's all I have, sir. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Bud, you got anything this evening?
No, I'd like to wish everybody a Happy New Year, and we're back in full swing for the new year, and looking forward to having a nice one.
I don't have anything to add.
Nothing to add. Mr. Vice Mayor?
Oh, nothing to say.
Okay. Councilman Vernal?
No, I don't believe I have anything to say.
Did y'all all get together and plan this?
I hate to bust your bubbles, right?
Two things.
I handed out a picture at the work session. This was presented to me by Kathy Abel-Melson from IRS Art Studio as an alternative to trees along With Creek Corridor, but I think since we're going to be replacing the trees with a more suitable tree, this may be something we might want to look into. In between the trees, what that is, is a pole with a lobster pot buoy on the top. This is in Hyannis Port, Massachusetts. And the idea is that it's very festive-looking, it's low maintenance, plus we could put hooks on these poles so that the reefs and the crabs that they put up every Christmas season could easily be attached, which they also put hooks or some kind of device to put the flags on. We could even take it a step further and have them to the route where the seafood festival is, and if we have banners for the seafood festival leading into the seafood festival. So just something that I'd like y'all to look at and maybe consider. It'd be very low maintenance, nautical in nature, so I'm sure that all of it can be easily accessed. The other thing is the food bank tomorrow at the old municipal building. I got a call from the food bank this afternoon with the pending weather forecast. Everyone should monitor Wavy Channel 10, and if it says that the, she said it could be listed either way, it could be the Food Bank of Virginia Peninsula, which would be in the F section of the scroll, or it could be Virginia Peninsula Food Bank. But one way or the other, they will say whether or not they're going to be opening late or if they're closed. If they're closed, of course, we're not going to get any food. If they're opening late, then our hours of operation will mirror theirs. So if they're going to open two hours late, we won't get the food until 11 o'clock, and of course, we'll stay open the full time, which would run at probably 4:00. But just monitor Wavy Channel 10, and that will give you an indication as to when it will be or if it's going to be canceled. Thank you.
Councilman Ayer?
I have a thing, thank you.
Kay, you got with the rest of the guys. All right, I've got a couple things, mostly just public service announcements. First is, the council acknowledged it from homeowners. So I guess I've got a letter here accepting from the Department of Homeland Security our hazard mitigation plan. What is important to citizens here is that by the city of Pecosin having this, we now continue to be eligible to apply for federal disaster assistance. So that's one of the main reasons for, well, obviously, you want a hazard mitigation plan so you know how to be in front of this stuff. It is a requirement for us to, in times of bad storms or whatever, to declare those emergencies and get that assistance. So we've done that. Looking forward tomorrow to a regional get-together, and this includes the city of Pecosin, on the Peninsula Regional Animal Shelter. I'll be there, as well as the mayors or chairs of the participants. It is ourselves, the city of Newport News, who actually has the building, the city of Hampton, and the county of York, all our participants in the new regional animal shelter. For those that have not seen it, there were some pictures here. It's a gorgeous facility. I rode by it today, so I'd know where I was going. And it is quite an addition, and I'm glad to be sharing this service with those localities. So it's a win-win for our citizens as well as for the animals themselves. So let everybody know about that. Two letters that have written on behalf of the city, talking about transportation issues, one of them being about transportation issues, and I think I said it here in my pile here somewhere. But bottom line, talking about, to the state, looking for participation or help from the state in doing both of our transportation issues, being Victory Boulevard now. I'd actually talk about that one first, even though With Creek is really our first program. And if every member of council has a couple minutes to hang out, I'd like to show you something that we'll be talking about in the future about With Creek Road. We've gotten a proposal back from VDOT, and we'll be sharing with the public in the very near future. And I think it's an exciting thing, but just, I'll... And I think it's an exciting thing, but just, I'll basically highlight it here. What we've received back is at least a consideration for three lanes and throughout the entire corridor, including the bridge over to Hampton, with reversible lanes built in and a center turning lane for when you want to use it. Basically, as I recall, that was what council had endorsed early on, and because of the cost of the bridge and the wanting to scale it back to what they could afford, this seems to have taken on its own new light. So I'm kind of excited about it and hoping council will share that excitement because it will help our citizens along the With Creek Corridor. And then finally endorsing the money for Breakwater at Messick Point. So, and I know that we are in the midst of applying for grants and the like, so trying to be in front of that in Richmond and garner the help of a very capable delegate, Delegate Helsel, that continues to do great things for us up there. All right. And that's all I've got. Is there a motion to adjourn? So move.
Second.
Okay. Judy, please.
Councilwoman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilman Ayer?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Vernal?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, and we are adjourned.